For me in order Angie, would you call the role please?
Commissioner Bailey.
Here.
Commissioner Bunting.
Pass up.
Commissioner Lumberman.
Here.
Commissioner Smith. Commissioner Murphy.
Here. Alrighty. John, could you give us the prayer tonight?
Heavenly Father, we ask for wisdom and guidance today as we think about the best interests of the taxpayers of Grashit County. In Christ's name, amen.
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 Stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Born and unborn in Michigan. Okay. Believe we have some changes to the agenda under K. Uh, we're going to strike the existing number seven. And replace it with a budget presentation by Chris. And then we're adding uh number eight uh inner government agreement from Ashley. And then uh John, I think you had something to add to the uh closed session.
Yeah, I uh would like to have a discussion with the rest of the commissioners about the uh first uh airport meeting that we had.
The session is closed or is that?
Well, that is gonna be involved, is it involved property?
That's property.
Then we can.
Yep.
Because property can. And and uh so uh but we do want to come back into open session to for so Sheila can finish up and go. So then we'll go back into closed session for the airport.
So we just do the airport at the end?
At the end.
Okay.
If that's alright without objection. Could use a motion for an agenda then.
So move.
Motion by Commissioner.
Okay.
Motion by Commissioner Bailey, second by Commissioner Lumberman, any discussion? Do you have something, Jan?
I wanted to add, I want to pull something out of the communications.
Okay, well, we'll do that next. Alright, uh no discussion, all those in favor, I? I oppose Nate, motion passed, we have an agenda. Uh, public comment, any members of the public wish to address the commission? Anyone online? Okay, let's move on uh to the consent calendar and uh Jan, you mentioned you wanted to pull something off it for discussion.
Yes, I might pull D, Great Lakes Bay Michigan Works, I'd like to pull that.
Alright.
So I wanted to add something else, I probably should have done it before this. But that's right, um. I have some issues I'd like to talk uh to you commissioners about, and it's multiple issues um on the courthouse, so um. I can do that on.
Through your commit, through your committee reports.
Okay.
Commissioner report.
That'll work. Alright, um. So uh Jane, you wanted to pull that out, you gotta go over what you want to pull out about on D?
Yeah, um. On D, um, um. The CEO from Michigan Works is going to attend, he's running late, he's got paperwork that he's gonna hand out to all the commissioners.
Okay. So, so do we want to leave that uh? Leave that open till he gets here?
Yes, that'd be great.
Okay, there are a motion to approve anything, everything else?
I'm over.
Motion by Commissioner Bailey, there's a second.
A second.
Second by Commissioner Bunting, any discussion? On the consent calendar other than D?
All those in favor, I. I oppose Dave.
Motion. So we are on to uh. Uh Tracy, do you have a report tonight?
Very short. Mister Chair though, could you repeat for me where you put the Ashley IGA on the agenda?
That is.
Eight.
Eight, yes, we now have an eighth item.
Okay, K eight.
Yeah, K eight.
Okay, very short because you will hear about other issues and activities um as we go through the agenda, but uh parvo, canine parvo virus, you were reading about uh some deaths of some dogs in the uh area uh resulting from canine parvo virus. What made it mysterious and especially concerning initially is that it was not showing up as parvo in the initial testing. Um, folks have determined though that it was parvo virus um and each of the dogs that uh that died from this were not fully vaccinated, so they're getting the testing issue, giving that a good think, but fortunately, we don't have another uh new lethal virus or something that's out there uh that's a danger to our animals, and that's the good news, the bad news, of course, is that we lost some dogs. I bring this up in part to close that issue off for you if you had not uh read about the conclusion, but also just a reminder to folks, you know, please vaccinate your animals and vaccinate them thoroughly completely, so if it's multiple doses, uh please finish the series uh to make sure that your animals are are fully protected. Uh wind turbine tax litigation, you know, I bring this up just about every meeting, we have um the EMREC, the executive board has approached uh both Consumers Energy and Exelon now that we have the the deal with DTE. Um, the reception from these folks is a little bit chilly, quite frankly. Um, but you know, DTE stepped in part because it wanted to clear the way for solar projects and I don't know what consumers or Exelon might be thinking about that, but it certainly seems to be taking a uh short view um in terms of renewable uh energy and citing them here in Grashit County. You may be hearing next about opioid litigation, there have been some settlements and there are some distributions uh that are supposed to have been made. Uh, this year, um, communities are to receive a distribution in about July and later in the fall. But we're still waiting for that July distribution and we're just not hearing anything more about the hangup. I do have a call into our uh local, local legal counsel, Michael Beam, I think it's time, maybe he gave you you folks a bit of a report on where things are. Uh, we haven't been able to connect yet, but it's my uh hope to get him to um a meeting perhaps even later this month, but we're reading everything we see and we're waiting for those distributions and a more definitive calculation of how much that will be. Um. Benefits. The open enrollment period for benefits begins September eighth, so later this week. This is done through a portal, so the portal opens um on a particular day this year, September eighth, and it closes on September nineteenth. So you go into that portal to make your elections for open enrollment. Sheila will be providing um uh information to staff and assistants and that process goes pretty well year after year. Also Sheila has arranged for a flu clinic uh in the courthouse this year. Uh, the date is still to be determined, uh but it'll be near the end of October is the way that it is looking now. Works out very well if you've never had a chance to take advantage of it, the health department folks generally set up in here. Uh, the line naturally, each person spaced six feet apart. Uh, we'll line up down the hallway, folks come in with their uh medical card and you're just in and out, it's a, it's a great system and a great convenience to employees. And goes a long way to help uh folks in the uh workplace stay safe, so. Alright, I'll leave it at that because I said other issues we've been working on will come up later in the agenda, but I'll take any questions. Thank you.
Alright. Next, uh commissioners' reports, John?
Um, we'll talk about the airport later. I would just like to say I was uh very happy with the way the union negotiations went. I felt like uh our team operated really well and uh I also felt like uh the unions did a good job, but it I, it felt like uh you know, almost like uh one organization with two perspectives coming together and making an agreement and uh both sides just uh working to make the deal work and uh the administration did a great job. Um, Sheila did uh almost all the prep for the negotiations and she was the lead in the negotiations and I think this is the first time that she's done that and uh as a result, uh at some point, uh I think she's uh perhaps entitled to a promotion uh because uh that was one missing element of her resume. Uh, but just want to say that uh and I think she's gonna give us more background on exactly the final details, but uh it was just uh pleasure and an honor sitting in on this. Um, we did not have a board of health meeting due to a lack of forum. Unfortunately, I was in school.
Yeah.
For the story, we didn't have a lack, but this Thursday, the eighth at eight thirty at the Ithaca Board of Health, uh we will have our August monthly meeting. So we'll take care of that, otherwise, uh no, I've been in up taking care of my mom, so. Anything else to report?
George, is that a morning meeting?
Yeah, start today, normal hour, finance at eight thirty, regular board meeting at nine.
You know if you'll need me for a board? Alright, I'll check with. It's just hard to take that, it's the second day of school, it's hard to take that off.
Yeah.
And I don't have anything, Jan?
Uh, yes, I've been to several meetings since the last time I've been at our uh mission meeting, I've been to Michigan Works meetings. I've been to Breckenridge, um, their monthly meeting. We learned township and I've also been at MMR, just made it to MMR uh before they were finishing um for uh meetings. Uh, it's been a busy time since the last meeting that we had for me. And um, one of the other things I wanted to talk about, I'm very surprised of how many phone calls I'm getting these days uh from the public, and a phone call from a Doug from Pine River Township on um uh a contract that he had done with the Drain Commission. And then all of a sudden, when he went to check on, you know, see how things were going, uh the people that were there putting in these other drains that his was supposed to connect into it. They told him that they were told no longer to connect it into that drain. So then he tried to get a hold of um our Drain Commissioner and um didn't want to talk to him, told him he was too busy. And so at that point that he called me, I also told him that he should call Pine River Township, uh Kevin Beeson, who was the uh supervisor, I was trying to think of the name supervisor there. And um, uh apparently there's been several uh complaints, um this what uh uh this Doug had told me, I had his last name, you guys, and I I don't know what I did with it. So anyway, that was one of the things I wanted to bring up, and I also that I've heard the news today, I'm very, very sorry. And we need to have uh Brian in our dreams, or I mean our, our dreams, I mean in our prayers of his um hardships that he's going through right now. And then um, another one was the Treasurers Office, which I see she's here, I've had calls on that, I think uh Commissioner Murphy also had phone calls where they had uh was surprised that the Treasurers Office was closed, that is not the issue, the issue is that uh most of the, I believe, in departments take turns going to lunch, so their, their offices always open. And so um apparently what I've heard is that when the Drain Commission, not the Drain, the um Deeds Office was there a long, she had no one that day. Closed it up, go in the bathroom, get something to eat, came back and and someone was really upset with her. I've not had a chance to talk to her directly, but I will hopefully this week. Um, but uh and I understand if you don't have absolutely nobody working. Uh, also my concern to where I was wondering if we could get with them, Matt, about do they do Zoom and the offices can, like they've all got computers? And if they do have to have a meeting where you want all of your employees to go to, maybe they could zoom in or maybe have them come here and use the commissioner's room and this way, somebody could be upstairs and they could use the uh, the uh this uh computer here, the, the screen here for Zoom. That's what I'm trying to get at, so that was another issue that's been since, since um the last meeting. And um, and I don't think it's anything really horrible, these things are, but the problem is, a little problem turns into a bigger problem. And uh the next thing you know, it's way out of control and I don't want to see that happen, that happen either. And then the other one was wages, it seems like we're continuously doing wages in here every meeting. We've got one person asking that we turn down another person, we're saying that we want to give that person a a raise. And um, it seems like we need to be doing this all at one time, these wages. It should be one month, uh maybe have a special meeting and go through all of this and do it once and get it over with. Because I feel that we're spending a lot more time on wages than what we are on the actual budget of the county. So um anyway, those are just my opinions and um wanted to share that with you commissioners and see how you feel about it too. Otherwise, I'm done.
Alright, yeah, I, I think I did hear something, Jan, that uh the, the, there was an issue with the Treasurers Office being closed for some days or being closed early, so that's just what I had heard.
Yeah, there was. They had closed the office and the clock was supposed to close the rest of the day. And um, and Terry and I have talked since then, she said that the girl that would have stayed there had broken her foot. But I also wondered that the two people that she took with her, and they were around the rest of the day, if they couldn't have stayed and watched it on Zoom. Um, and that way they would have been at the office, been able to keep it open and uh she could have gone to the meeting, and it's my understanding you were at St. Louis um City Hall. And so it seems like there would be a way that our tech guy could, could fix that, where they could zoom back and forth. So it's something that we can look at it for the future, not just your office, but for all the offices.
Any other questions, Sam?
Um, I just attended a day for a few hours on the airport, uh I think it was last week.
Thursday.
Thursday, yeah. Uh, can we move over that to CD?
Okay. Uh, let's move on to new business, uh Keegan, looks like you're up first. Um, do we want to go, Dan, do we want, hold on, do we want to go back uh to finish up the uh consent calendar? Cause Chris is here, was there something? You wanted to bring up with that, why don't we take that, take care of that, sorry, Keegan.
Um, Chris, if you want to come up and talk about Michigan Works, you had some paperwork.
Shit. I wanted everyone to turn a whisper. Um, good afternoon, Chris, we're here with the CEOs and shareholders and I noticed uh that on your agenda today was a communication on the uh floor from Saguin County regarding our Michigan Works agency. So I wanted to come and just hopefully answer any questions you have, but also provide you some background information of kind of what's going on. Um, just as you're aware, we have our budget cycle fiscal year two thousand twenty-two, which was approved last year by our full board of directors, um since that time, our fiduciary Saginaw County has actually uh taken about four hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars above what was approved by our board. Um, that has put us in a kind of a fiscal issue, um we've been trying to uh um work with Saginaw to no avail, so in order to uh get these funds back, we actually hired a uh law firm, uh Miller Canfield out of the Detroit area to help um to help get these funds back so that we could make sure that we do not go over our allotted budget. Um, so what I brought today for um for each of you is just a copy of the documentation that we have sent, this is uh public information, so it's not uh anything that would be uh confidential, but I wanted to make sure that you were all uh just aware of the facts as um as uh reported by actual our, our attorneys, so the first document you're gonna receive is a letter to Saginaw County in April eighteenth saying, hey, uh please stop taking this money. Then the other two are actual the legal complaint and a preliminary injunction that we did file to try to at least go to the drawing board and try to to find these uh documents, so that's what I'm pending out, and I have one for everyone uh at the table.
Thank you.
So this again, the process is working, it's going the way it's supposed to go, um the courts are are, you know, they're working through the way they're supposed to do. But I just wanted to make sure that you were all aware, um ultimately, these funds are your funds, uh these funds are um, they help support the workforce of Grashit County as well as our other uh four other counties in our region. And so we are, uh we, myself and our administrative team are just doing um our best to be good stewards of these taxpayer dollars, and so that's what uh I wanted to uh to discuss with you today. Um, Miss, um, excuse me, Commissioner Bunting has been a great uh addition to our board, very supportive. And we are uh doing everything within the, the, the letter of the policy and the, the law that we follow at Michigan Works, uh we are federally funded agency. And so we're making sure that everything we do is well within the letter of those of that law, so.
A couple of questions that I first went on the board that I've asked uh Mr. Rusto is that um, why did this all happen, do you, I mean, it's been on two years?
Four years, four and a half years.
Four and a half years. And uh, what do you think, how, this is something that's been ongoing for several years now?
It's a perfect storm, um basically what it was is uh ten years ago, there was a shift in uh thought process, a way that the county distributed their funds, and so at first it actually was a benefit to our organization. But as the uh, the pension issue gets bigger and bigger, which every uh municipality in our region has, uh it's come to the point where we had to do something about it, and so that's what this was, it just came more than we can afford. And so this was about a two-year effort on my part, my uh staff to try to uh alleviate this issue, and so then this is a, you know, this is the end result of trying to make sure that uh, you know, we're not uh spending more than we can. Um, and that's kind of where we are right now. But I think that the biggest point I want to drive home is, you know, these aren't Michigan Works funds, they're actually allocated to your communities. And per our agreement, it was uh, you know, you'll entrust us to be good stewards of it, and that's what we're doing.
At this point right now is uh Grashit County or Grashit County recipients that we've been shorted or slighted or?
The service provision for your uh, in your region has not been slighted, um so basically what we are is uh there is a shortfall that we're, we're trying to get the money back from, um you have no liability. I'm gonna put it that way, there's no liability right now, but we're trying to fix the system, we're trying to fix the process.
Yeah, I, that's what I heard you say right now.
I heard lawyers say. It's a, if it keeps continuing, there is a potential, and the reason there's a potential, if there's any costs that are incurred by our system that we cannot pay our overall allowed threshold, it is per our inter-local agreement that those disallowed costs get distributed across all five counties. Your percentage of that is about eight percent of the overall cost or whatever it is. We do have certain uh contingencies in place to cover that up to, I think we have about a hundred and sixty thousand or a fund that we can fix that. But that's what we're trying to, to make sure it doesn't happen, that's why we're doing that, to make sure you guys don't have those costs, we're trying to protect our member agencies.
Uh, how long do you think before this goes to court?
I would have said uh, since we filed on July seventh, I would have said by the end of uh July, but I was wrong. The court process, this is uncharted territory for everybody on, in our organization. It's uh, it's an ongoing process, we're hoping it's gonna move a lot quicker, we were assigned a judge finally, um out of Tuscaloosa County. Um, so we're, we're hoping it's gonna go faster than it has up to this point.
And um, one of the things that I would be interested in too, I didn't even know this myself, I wanted to ask you, what was your background, you came in?
Uh, before this, I was a private management consultant, I'm a retired Air Force officer, so. Uh, when I come to you, it's not, uh, I'm not making this stuff up, this is all right in front of you and I, I talk to lawyers, uh, cause I'm a uh Air Force officer by trade, so I don't uh, don't speak law. That's the reason we got the experts, and Miller Canfield is one of the best law firms in the state.
I, I probably just need a little explanation about this, so we're, Grashit County is allocating some money from the federal funds.
Yes.
We now have a consortium of five counties that are put together.
Yes.
Saginaw handles the money?
Yes, that, oh, I'm sorry.
So then what happens is that Saginaw is spending more than they should be or they're?
They're taking more out of it than we're allowed to spend, uh so it was either we lay off staffs or we pay these funds. Our board made the uh, made the election to not lay off that and instead um not pay these funds, but uh Saginaw took the funds without the board's authorization and that's what this is about, that's what we're trying to fix.
And I, I see you're in uh circuit court in Saginaw, are either side gonna go further after this, or do you think you can resolve this in circuit court?
We're really hoping that if nothing else, we'll come to mediation, so this will bring us to the uh, uh drawing board. We're willing to, you know, find a middle ground, we just know what we're allowed to spend and we don't want to go over that, cause that, that's when the mess begins.
Are you seeking someone else to do your?
Yeah, that was who Sheri were.
Oh, we are, um, we actually are in contract, or not contract, we're in talks with another agency, I can't uh talk about.
But you're on scene.
Oh, yes, sir, we are very close to, um, I just can't, they're not ready yet.
Is that?
Yeah.
Why you know?
I've been, I've been looking for an alternate for about a year and a half, so it's not uh something we've been looking for.
So, who audits your staff, who audits your?
Uh, we get audited by the state, we also get audited by the feds, as well as we have our own internal auditor, um we uh contract with Gassing and Associates out of the Detroit area. But we have multiple levels of audit going on.
So nobody noticed this?
Um, they know it, we are feeling our way through it, it's uh, this is the first time it's ever happened, so this is uh more say again, I'm sorry.
They overspend it one year.
Yes, yeah, this is all since this year.
Well, they've done it one year, so.
Yes, sir.
Got it, were you assured?
No, thank you, this is the first time it's happened.
And that's about four hundred and?
Forty-six thousand so far since uh beginning of January.
Four hundred and forty-six thousand.
Uh, you're one sixty, continue, see, go to Miller Canfield.
Where, where fortunately, we were um, within the possibility that this would occur, we've actually been um cutting wherever we could, we didn't fill position, uh we've been uh not going to some things, so we're only over about a hundred, between a hundred and hundred and sixty that we're trying to bridge the gap, we, like I said, we do have some contingencies, but at the end of the day, our board approved a number and it wasn't um uh adhered to, so that's what we're trying to fix.
Can you give me a little explanation of Michigan Works, what, what are you doing for Grashit County?
Uh, well, we are um, we have a service center in Alma and that's our, that's our Grashit County hub. But we work with uh employers as well as job seekers, we will pay for training, uh from the employer standpoint, we will pay for folks to get uh GEDs. Uh, we'll, uh, we'll play for them, not only that, but we'll also help them with job searching, we'll put their, their uh, their uh uh information out on like job boards, like Indeed and stuff like that.
Is it like an employment type of thing?
No, we're, we're the employment agency, so we actually help people get jobs, we'll train them, we'll um, we'll make sure that they are uh, you know, we'll give them the tools that they need, and we also work with employers. So if we have an employer, for example, for example, Avalon Tahoe, they're a, a big partner whenever they're looking for uh uh workers, we'll help them find it. We also pay for uh some of their training to train their staff so that they could uh upskill their workforce as well, so we do, we have our fingers in a lot of different pots. Um, in Grashit County, we see uh, you know, uh people come through our service center every year and it's really uh, uh, we are a federal agency, so all of our programs are federally funded and they have specific um eligibility requirements that we have to adhere to. And so that's the other part that's kind of tricky, we can't help everybody, we can, uh if someone comes in the door, we can sit down in front of a computer, walk them through uh job search, we can help them with their resumes, uh help them with interviewing skills, those kind of soft skills. But we also have uh tangible training that we can provide if they're eligible.
How do other counties handle this, is everybody in a four or five county consortium, some counties handle, I'm sure big counties probably take care of themselves.
There's only one single county and that's in uh Oakland, the rest of them are all part of consortiums like ours. Uh, they all handle things a little differently, uh, for example, Grand Rapids is a huge area, they have a very uh robust uh network that they work with their Michigan Works Agency, ours is a uh, a little smaller, we're kind of a, a shift, we're right on the border between the south, which is growing and the north part of our lower peninsula, which is shrinking, so we're in a, a unique uh, a unique agency.
I guess one more question, how did Saginaw get picked to run the checkbook?
That happened about forty years ago, I wish I can answer that, I still haven't been able to find that, it was just, it made sense at the time and it just kind of stayed that way. Any other questions? Um, Christian Bunting definitely knows how to get ahold of me if there's any information I could provide, uh like I said, I always uh, anything I provide is with uh the proper um uh references and sources.
Thank you. I think one other question I had for you was um that you, one of the things that this first happened was that the fed, the federal government was involved and uh came to do the investigation on all of this, and this is how I think that started too, I can't remember how long ago with that.
That was last fall, so last November, uh October, excuse me, October.
And so the federal government from out of DC and out of Chicago got involved and um.
They, they took a look at it, we weren't sure if the, the way that Saginaw was uh uh doing. We weren't sure if the, the way that Saginaw was, uh, uh, doing the, the funds, if it was allowable by under federal law. Um, they came in and said, yes, but it's been certainly high. And so then we're like, okay, we'll, we'll keep moving forward. And then, uh, in January is when the, the fund started, uh, uh, without, uh, authorization, the fund started on that budget. So then we had to figure out how to fix it.
And I think I'm fast, uh, should be, they might.
Anybody anything else?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, Sheriff Thomas, we were told back in October, Sheriff's Convention that Michigan Works, the big agencies, given the police cabin. We call the Alma Michigan Works. They told us that our candidates are a game free full-time employee and that they would not factor or pay for the pooling of that person to go. They, uh, they talked to the sheriff of Sanlao County and they had a person in the jail about whether to be police cabin if you're by a police officer. They paid for his, so what can you tell me the difference there?
Uh, there are some nuances between regions. It's more so if they have, um, additional funding sources. So we're limited in the, the sources that we have, our federal sources. Other counties could, um, they might have, uh, for example, in Santa La County, that particular, um, organization may have had additional funds that, that's paid for that through the Michigan Works Agency. We didn't have that at the time when you came through. Um, so that, that's, and that's one of those eligibility criteria. If, uh, someone's already employed, we can't, can't help them too much to go through training. However, like I said, there are those nuances, but we are, um, if you're looking for that kind of training, we can actually, uh, there are some state programs that we could actually apply for in, um, in, uh, early on. And that way we could kind of preemptive that, preempt that, uh, later on in the process.
Yeah, that's one of the interests that one that one work right now is fantastic. A whole lot of calculation, also those are the kind of candidates that we're looking for.
And there's a, there's a, a kind of a sweet spot in the middle. If we can get to them in the right time or they're talking to us, have the candidate come in and talk to us. We can work with them and kind of fill in the gap to make sure that, uh, they'll be eligible at the right time for, for the program.
Now, does, does Michigan Works here in Alma, do they realize this or is, I knew that it just started what you're talking about?
Oh, no, they are, they're pulling, they're full part of it. The Alma and Michigan Works, we work very closely together. We're a, a single system. Uh, we meet with each other constantly. It's constant communication flow.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
I appreciate the time. Thank you.
Thank you.
So without objection, I'll consider that approved on the consent calendar. Okay, let's move on.
Survey, you're up.
All right, so I have the, uh, two thousand twenty-two, uh, L forty-two-nine is the, uh, tax rate request. And so this is for the, uh, millage, uh, rates that will be levied this winter. Uh, so I understand that there has been some, uh, discussion, uh, changing, uh, the millage rates as it hasn't levied in the past. So if there's any, uh, changes that need to be made to this form, I can revise it and I'll bring it to the next meeting in September.
I don't think we have any desire to change anything at this point, in my opinion.
I think so.
Oh. I was still a little interested in reducing the rates. Uh, and I know we had, uh, you know, discussion, we had that discussion where.
Of the windmill situation. For every dollar for dollar that we reduce it, they produce it.
But.
There's a problem there.
Well, it's, it is a obstacle, but we still need to do what's best for the taxpayers of the county.
Agree with you. But what is the best thing to do? Not take the money? The windmill money, uh, there's, it's, it's, it's going to be a longer in-depth conversation we're going to do tonight. But I think it's, it needs to be, it needs to happen. That conversation needs to happen. I'm not inclined to do it at this point myself. Can't speak feet more, obviously.
Keegan, you have to have this by September thirtieth?
Uh, the second meeting in, uh, September. I believe in October is when our report, our report is due for all the millage rates in Grasset County.
So John, if we wanted to have this discussion, we could have it at the next meeting.
We could. Good. I would like to review all, all the same documents that we had at the last meeting. Um, and, uh, review the net dollars to the departments. And even if some of these utilities get a cut, uh, as long as the net dollars would be roughly consistent with the net dollars that they're getting already, I, I would like to see the, you know, some kind of tax cut go through.
Well, if we're going to discuss that at the next meeting, I would like, I, I would like to have your proposals. I would not, I don't feel comfortable sitting here and go, well, do you think you meet a tenth or do you think two tenths? In other words, come up, maybe you can sit down with our, our finance administrator and come up with some actual numbers that you may propose. All right.
I think in that chart, I'd like to see how much the windmill companies will get reductions, what the cost will be.
Well, I, I believe it was dollar for dollar.
It'd be dollars, well.
Wasn't that the statement that you, uh, made?
Yeah, it'll be dollar for dollar. It'd be interesting to see how many dollars that we really, what the whole operation generates. And then how many dollars you're taking off that. Look, it's, if you have fifty million dollars, you think I have a point off? What do they say?
So that, that'd be something to include in the.
Yeah, I'll get some.
You understand, you, you know where I'm coming from.
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
So I'm hearing consensus, you're going to bring this back?
Uh, yeah, so, uh, what I can do is I could bring this exact form, uh, without the millage rates that I have here that to be levied. Um, I can leave that blank and then as the millage rates get approved, I can write them in to be signed if that works for everyone.
You could break two forms, one that's already filled out.
Yeah. Uh, whatever one gets signed is one that gets approved. So yeah, that totally works.
Probably work, yeah.
Alrighty.
Alright. Hey, thank you.
Oh, thank you.
I'm sorry for that. After.
Come on.
I'm making this comeback. All right, uh. Next up, uh, Jennifer, are you handling this?
Yeah.
Okay.
Good evening. I'm here today to, um, request approval of an upgrade to our court recording equipment. I am joined by, um, Chief Judge Sullivan is here by Zoom. Matt Hewitt has been a big part of this, um, committee. Tracy and also Chris Osterhoff have all been consulted in our part of this and will be helping to answer any questions that there might be. I wanted to start by just giving a little bit of a history, just to, just to make sure everybody's on the same page. Uh, one of the main, uh, charges of the court is to provide an accurate and reliable recording of any court hearings that we, um, conduct. And the way that we do that currently is that we have a certified court recorder who provides, um, runs an audio system to record any hearings that we have. And then we also need a certified court recorder to do a transcript if that's needed, which would be a, you know, word for word, um, copy of the proceeding. In the last year, over a year, I think, uh, we've been having some significant problems in the circuit court and in the hearing room with our recording equipment. Have FDR, uh, providing that equipment to us now. And some of the problems that we've been experiencing, um, we have experienced that the equipment just freezes in the middle of the hearing. And so we have to stop and restart it and try again. Uh, we also have it not turn on at all. So we have to shut it down and keep doing that two, three times to get it running again. Uh, we've been told that the, the equipment in the hearing room is so old that, um, they don't even support it anymore. They're trying to help us as much as they can, but they don't actually support that equipment. So a decision, decision was made by the committee and the people that I've been talking about, um, here that we needed to do an upgrade and that the most logical upgrade would be a video recording equipment. It's just the wave of the future. It's what most more Michigan courts have moved to. And so that's what we're here looking for approval for tonight. The video, moving to video will, uh, assist us in several ways. One problem that we're also having is that, um, having certified court recorders is getting more challenging. It's an antiquated certification process. And since most courts are moving to video, um, nobody's felt the need to upgrade that, that system. And so it's becoming incredibly challenging to get people to be able to pass the test and to provide that. And when you move to video, that's not necessary anymore. Anybody can run the equipment if it's a video recording. And so including the judges, um, if need be. I mean, that wouldn't be our ideal, uh, but that is a possibility.
Jennifer?
Yeah, sure.
Could I just say?
Absolutely.
A-actually, since it was installed in, in my courtroom in Clinton County, I've been running the equipment myself. And it used to be I had one, uh, employee in the court the whole time. So she couldn't get any work done at her desk. And we had to lose a staff member by attrition one year, which created even more of a problem. By me being able to run that equipment, that employee is in the office, helping people at the counter, getting her work done. And we've been able to not have to refill that FTE. And, you know, it's just been more efficient and cost effective. So in, in Clinton, there really is support, uh, for judges or magistrates to be able to, uh, utilize that equipment.
Okay, great. Um, so that would be a possibility and would certainly help, um, us with staff shortages when we have them. Uh, we also, it would solve the problem right now. We have two different recording equipments that are being supported by our IT department, one in district and then the other in probate and circuit. And, um, it would help the, one of the goals of this project is to get everybody on the same system. Um, it also would be more compatible with Zoom since COVID. We've been doing a lot of court hearings by Zoom and it's very hard to hear the audio when Zoom is, is being used with our audio equipment because it doesn't directly connect to Zoom. Whereas this new equipment would have a direct feed to the Zoom hearing. Uh, so that would certainly help in our accuracy for our scripts. So the, um, I've given some information. We, uh, Matt was kind enough to post an RFP in the spring. We had three people bid. Um, what's? There was JAVS, BIQ and BIS. And I've listed the cost of each of those. We eliminated BIS, um, because it was a different type of bid. It, it uses, it wants to use our old equipment that we currently have and integrate it with the new, some of the new equipment. And we're concerned about that, the accuracy and, and what problems that, that might cause in our ability to move forward. Um, so we eliminated that one pretty quickly. Uh, JAVS and BIQ are pretty comparable in the price and their proposal. Um, so we are recommending JAVS. Uh, mainly the reason being because our circuit judges who, um, move back and forth from Grasset to Clinton each week uh, already use JAVS. And so for consistency purposes, they would be able to use the same system in both counties. We also know from having, I'm not sure how long Clinton has used JAVS, but I know it's been a reliable system for you. Correct, Judge?
It correct, yes, very reliable.
Um, so our recommendation is the, um, JAVS company to go forward with that project. And I have a proposal on how to pay for the bulk of the cost because it is a costly endeavor. I'm, I'm not trying to, uh, tell you that it's not. It costs two hundred and forty-five thousand dollars and thirteen cents or thirteen dollars and ten cents. Um, I have a hundred and, I'm estimating about a hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars left in my childcare fund budget that won't be utilized this year. And so I would need board approval to move that into the next fiscal year to help offset the cost of this project. And then we have twenty-five thousand dollars available in the law library fund that we could put towards that as well. And then I have, um, I got a approval, approval, a pre-approval for a federal grant for the friend of the court, um, to pay thirty-seven thousand five hundred dollars for the hearing room. Um, because that's an eligible expense because we do child support hearings in there. So that will pay for all of, except for forty-three thousand five hundred and thirteen dollars and ten cents. Those are a little bit of an estimate, but that's the lowest item, my estimate of what I'm not going to spend in the childcare fund this year. So I'd be asking for approval to move forward with JAVS and approval from the board to authorize the funds from this fiscal year to be utilized in the next fiscal year to offset the cost of the project.
And the, uh, motion by Commissioner Bunting, uh, we have a second?
A second.
Second by Commissioner Leverman. Uh, question I had, then the forty-three thousand balance, you're going to cover that in the budget somehow?
Um, what, I had spoke with, um, Tracy and Chris and they suggested a couple of different things. One, either that it be used from the ARP dollars and/or, um, that it be a capital improvement added to the capital improvement budget.
Now, our significant, uh, preference is, uh, that it come from the ARP fund. It's just clear that way.
So Commissioner Bunting, do you, uh, are you willing to, uh, change your motion to add forty-three thousand from the, uh, federal funds?
Yes, I am. The ARP.
ARP.
And then, Matt, I don't, do you want to speak to the, um, storage costs as well before we?
Yeah, sorry, let me. So at the bottom of, uh, Jennifer's memo, there is a note about storage costs of about approximately fifteen thousand dollars. So we would want to include that in, in this amount as well. And what that, those storage costs do is because we're recording video now or would be potentially, instead of just audio, we would need to play through all of these video files because video files take significantly more storage than audio files. So the, the fifteen dollars that we, or sorry, the fifteen thousand dollars that we would want to add to this, uh, forty-three, five thirteen, uh, the fifteen thousand would be for the storing the actual video and audio files.
And I believe I mistakenly indicated that would be an annual cost, but Matt said it's a one-time expense.
It is a one-time.
Sorry, big difference.
If, if that's a one-time, uh, expense, I, I would recommend to the board that we, uh, take that from ARP as well.
Yes. Good, Jan, with you?
Yes.
Okay, how about John? This, John, you seconded it. Do you, do you have any discussion on that?
What's the total amount?
Fifty-eight thousand.
Fifty-eight?
Yeah, I'm still good with that.
It's good, okay. Any, any other discussion?
Probably a dumb question. How many people can be using this system at the same?
It would be for all the court systems. So they, at the same time, yes. They're going to come up and, and upgrade each individual court to have the system available.
Potentially, how many full-time employees could this free up?
I'm hesitant to look at it that we would be eliminating positions uh, because most of our people do double duty as it is. Like Judge indicated, um, they're either waiting on the window or they're in court recording. Um, it's, our judges only have one clerk usually. And so I, I would be, I would be hesitant to say that that will automatically eliminate any.
Let me put it another way. How many hours would you say?
Oh, if we went to what Judge is suggesting where, I mean, it would be all, oftentimes our court recorders are in the courtroom all day with the judges on the bench, uh, you know, three, four days a week.
To, to maybe put it another way, would you say in the future, uh, when you have a position that's, person's moved from a position out to retire or something or go somewhere else? Maybe they wouldn't need to be replaced?
I think it's something we could certainly look at and we always try to do that. If we don't need, I just, it's hard for me to say that that's going to work out to eliminate people specifically, but.
I don't think we're asking to eliminate it.
But we would, we would definitely keep that in consideration.
I, i- if I could jump in here, first of all, um, I think what this does is it, uh, creates a much more efficient operation. When you have someone who's not at work, uh, one day because, uh, uh, she has a medical appointment, childcare or, or something, and a judge can actually run a system that you're not eliminating the position so much, but you're not requiring that your court reschedule all of its matters that day. That is efficiency. Also, more than looking, more than looking forward on this, you need to look back. The day was, and I can't believe I'm old enough to know this, um, but, um, you know, there used to be court reporters in every courtroom. They still have them in the federal court, human court reporters. And so things have been significantly streamlined because then these recording systems came along and people aren't hiring court reporters anymore. So that significant reduction in staff and reduction in costs has already happened by virtue of these recording and these systems, we don't have the resources here to quantify this, but I can say with complete confidence. and these systems, we don't have the resources here to quantify this, but I can say with complete confidence, uh, you know, having run courts elsewhere, that these systems pay for themselves in, uh, in, uh, personnel costs over time. And it, it was hugely painful for court systems in the past to give up their human court reporters. Um, and, you know, I, in an organization I was in, uh, you know, we went through that, it was, it was awful. But, so that was past, you're now at the point now where, again, and I'm repeating myself, but these systems have made things so much more efficient. Um, uh, both in streamlined work processes and in dollars spent.
Absolutely.
Hey, any further questions?
I got another question, uh, Tracy, this is for you, um.
Uh, I'm breaking up, John, I'm breaking up, I can't, okay, I'm kidding, go on.
Why is it cleaner to go A R P funds? Why can't we put this under cap? I mean, I feel like we need to do this. Um, I also feel like we've told many groups that we've shut off the A R P. Um, why, why would you want to see this go through A R P funds?
Well, let me comment that the groups that you've said, no, we're not going to give more A R P funds. It has been so that we could do just this kind of thing. And that is to begin to attend to some needs in our courthouse. So, you know, the, the, the courts are a, a, a county function. And so this, uh, is, is a use that's entirely consistent with this. Uh, we are one. Um, this can go either way, it's just we've got the pot of money, we know, uh, money is in, in it. Uh, there is not the, um, uh, additional, uh, budgeting function. We can go either way, but, um, addressing the, uh, the use, this is exactly what you folks said you wanted to do.
Uh, I, I look at it as like just, I, I, it's a, it's a one-time charge. Basically, you're not going to buy another one next year or down the road for a waste. So I look at the A R P money is to fill in those blanks where on a capital improvement, we put a lot of things in there that we know we're going to have to recycle and redo and, and, and like trucks and all those other things and fixing the facade, that's going to have to be fixed again. So I look at that as, as a one-time uh, purchase, if you will, out of the A R P funds, and it doesn't draw down any county funds by doing it. That's my point.
Any further discussion? Let me click the vote on this. Uh, all those in favor, aye? Aye, close aye? You want, we're all, you need to, okay.
Commissioner Lumberman?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey?
Yes.
Commissioner Bunting?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion passed.
I appreciate your support.
Have one more item?
Thank you. Have one more. Thank you all for being here, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Uh, my next.
You're welcome.
Request today is, um, to, for you to approve the Midland County Juvenile Detention Center bed rental agreement that I proposed, that I've put in your packets. Um, as you may or may not know, juvenile detention beds have been near impossible. Sheriff's here to attest for us to get over the last year. And we have reached a proposal with Midland County to assure us a bed. Uh, we just are agreeing to pay them a daily rate of a hundred and seventy-five dollars a day um, for every day of the year, but that will assure that we have one bed available that isn't in Jackson County or Ottawa County where the judge, the sheriff's kind enough to transport our kids. Um, it's, in my mind, it's a no cleaner, the money's already in the budget. We desperately need a bed available when we need it. Um, and this will give us at least one bed as an option for kids that are dangerous and really need to be placed somewhere.
Is it in your budget, Jennifer?
It is, yeah.
So.
Motion by Commissioner Smith, support by Commissioner Bailey, any further discussion?
Sure, my only question is, when we see those, when we look at the, uh, monthly budget reports and we see those travel expenses to.
Well, you'll, you see like Ottawa County on there, and I don't know, I think it's like four hundred dollars a day. Char, but you see one on there, kid's there for ten days and paying about four grand, that's what you're seeing.
Yeah.
So that's what you're seeing is that bed for that child juvenile in there where now we're eighty percent beat. I'll tell you what, when I hear that we got a bed available in Midland County compared to driving to Holland or to Jackson, or we used to have to go to Monroe, my guys are a lot more, it's a forty-five minute trip to Midland and then they hit back and be in the county in twenty, twenty-five minutes for these trips or half a day. If I ever wanted to do that, they put Monroe, picked one up, and then gave it to Ottawa and then took almost the whole fall or shift.
And it's a problem at Costa State, nobody can get juvenile detention beds right now. So I mean, not only does it make it closer, but there were times when we had kids that really needed to be placed and we didn't have anywhere to put them because you can't get a bed, it's very challenging.
Uh, these are problem children. What about the hospital on the fourth floor? Is that all different?
Yeah, that's, these are delinquent youth, you can't put them in hospital. That is, it would be a different criteria.
You can't.
Jan, do you need the, uh, effective date?
I, I would, yes, I would, um, ask that it be effective October first.
I'm going to add that to the.
Okay, great.
Any further discussion?
Just roughly, how many times would you use that bed a year? I mean, when we're kind of around different places, have an idea?
How many times will we use this bed? I think this bed will be full almost every day. Is that what you're, I guess?
I guess the question is, how many times we use them, whether we use Ottawa or.
I would say this bed will probably be used whether it's by kid A today, kid B tomorrow, and kid C the next day. I'm going to say ninety.
Yeah, I mean, what we're doing right now, honestly, is if we have somebody in a bed, we're weighing who's, um, more of an at to the community and we take one out and we put one in. So this won't.
You take out.
Solve our problems, they often go home because there isn't anywhere else for them to go. So it won't solve our problems, but it will.
What age group are you talking?
Um, these are kids up to eighteen. So between ten and eighteen.
I don't believe that, that's schools.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, sad.
Kids in first graders and kindergarten.
Then they have an extra bed available, we didn't get two beds up there.
We could, yes, we're just not under contract somewhere than one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Anything else? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, close aye? Motion passed.
Thank you, I appreciate your support.
Okay. There, there. Um, Matt, you have a rural broadband project?
I do, I've got a presentation, very short presentation to share, so bear with me a moment while I get my screen shared out.
There before.
There we go. All right, so I, I just wanted to, uh, speak to the board tonight very briefly to just give an update on our rural broadband, um, project that the board approved, uh, a couple of meetings ago. So first I wanted to talk about what's happened since you guys, uh, decided to go with wideband as our rural broadband project advisor. Um, you approved that on August first, and then on the seventeenth, I went ahead and met with them to kind of discuss next steps as to what we need to do to get rolling with this broadband project. So, um, we got our purchase agreement signed with them. Um, Ray wanted to meet with some local internet service providers. We also, um, discussed the, the Connect Nation broadband maps that have been posted on, uh, Connect Nation's website. And what these maps are, are maps that show broadband availability, um, in different counties in Michigan, different places across the United States. These maps were updated a couple of years ago, but they didn't use a very accurate, uh, methodology for updating them. So the state of Michigan's actually going to be contracting with Connect Nation to update these maps again. And these refreshed maps are going to be available in November of this year, hopefully at the earliest. Um, Ray talked today about those not being published until early next year. And then we also discussed, uh, forming a stakeholder group. And then, uh, today, Commissioner Bailey and I met with Ray again to discuss more of the project timeline and some additional next steps. So that's what's happened so far. Today, Ray talked, uh, Ray from my band talked about two main funding sources that we should kind of be taking a look at. One of them is what they call, uh, the broadband equity access and the appointment program or B program. And this is, uh, a federal program. And then it's, it's being administered at the federal level, but it's kind of being executed at the state level. So what this program does is it gives two billion dollars to the state of Michigan approximately. And then the state's going to dole this out to local communities to assist with getting broadband rolled out. But, uh, wideband isn't expecting the application period for this money to start up until, uh, twenty twenty-four. And then to kind of tide communities over until this B program launches in, uh, twenty twenty-four is, uh, the state of Michigan's Robin program. So this is a state-run program and the, they'll be accepting applications for this funding as early as Q four of this year or this may roll into the first quarter of next year as well. So those are the two main programs that we're going to be looking at. And Ray talked mostly about this Robin program only because the availability is starting sooner than the B program. Um, this slide discusses a little bit about what B is trying to do. So it's, it's splitting, uh, broadband into three main categories. There's the people that have broadband as defined by this program. Broadband is a download speed of a hundred megabits per second or an upload speed um, of twenty megabits per second, and you have to have both of these to be considered true broadband. Uh, next, we have an underserved category, which means that they're able to get, um, download speeds of less than a hundred megabits per second, but above twenty-five megabits per second and upload speeds of less than twenty megabits per second or greater than three megabits per second. So these people, they do get what's considered broadband-ish, I guess I would say it's a slower speed broadband. Um, but they, they get something. And then the unserved people, these are the people that really have no access to any type of broadband. Um, so they're getting download speeds of less than twenty-five megabits per second and upload speeds of less than, uh, three megabits per second. So those are the three categories that B is splitting up the group, uh, splitting this up into, and the, and that's B is the federal program. And then Robin, like I said, is the state of Michigan program. And rather than having three groups, they're just having two, they're having people that truly have broadband. And then they're combining the unserved and underserved, uh, categories into one giant category that they're just calling underserved. Um, so one of the next steps we'd like to take is form a rural broadband community advisory group. And two of the reasons we want to do this is to kind of establish avenues of communication with different stakeholders, different groups of people that, uh, we believe will be influenced or impacted by this project. And then it also allows us, it allows the community to be able to express their needs to us so that we can make sure that their needs are addressed by the project. So tentatively, um, Tracy and I, and I've, uh, chatted or emailed, uh, George and John about this as well, but we'd like to have the following people on this advisory group. Um, myself, representing the county, uh, George Bailey and I don't know why John's name isn't on here, I must have inadvertently left it off, but John as well, representing the Greshit County Board of Commissioners. Uh, Casey Zenner, representing Greater Greshit. A representative to be decided by the Greshit, Isabella R E S D. And then we had also talked about putting this Laura Scriba on this committee as well. And she's basically a, a citizen that lives in an unserved or underserved area. So we thought getting feedback from her would be, uh, key to this as well. So the next steps that we'd be taking would be to establish this advisory group with the board's approval with those people on it. Um, we're going to be working with wideband to determine unserved and underserved areas in Greshit County. Wideband is going to be engaging fiber providers that are currently serving Greshit County. They're going to assess those providers and their coverage. And then they also want to assess any value that Greshit County can provide to the internet service providers. And then after we've done all that, we can develop a fill-in map to fill in those areas that are unserved or underserved and then work with those I S Ps as well as, uh, uh, the federal and state government to secure funding sources. So that is my very brief broadband project update. And I, uh, have time to take any questions from the board if there are any.
Matt, would you simply like me to appoint that committee?
I, uh, we, yes, if that's, if that's what the board would like.
Objection.
Point or?
Yeah, the committee you mentioned.
Yeah.
Okay. Let's get that done then without objection. All right, thanks, Matt.
Excellent, thank you.
Okay, next, we are on to, uh, register deeds, Kimberly?
Having a bad issue today, sorry.
Almost all of them.
I just wanted to come in front of the board and let you know that I'm hoping to try to change software vendors for my office. This is something that Mary was, um, thinking of doing also, but the contract will be up during my term, so I'm hoping to do that. Um, it'll improve the integrity of my records, I believe, protecting Greshit County residents. Um, it would be funded ninety-five percent by grant money and the other five percent by my technology fund. Um, we would also with this change, start e-recording in the office, which the state of Michigan is moving, wanting all the registers to start doing.
But a recording video and audio?
Just e-recording documents.
Oh.
They transmit them, um, to us. That gives a, a, almost not an immediate, but very close to, if there's a problem with the document, we are going to reject it. It's sent back to them the same day.
Like in real time?
In real time, yes. Whereas now they're getting mailed into us. We, we timestamp them that we receive them, we look at them, if we reject them, they get mailed back or UPS, however they send them to us, they get them back, have to fix things and then send them into us again. So with mortgages and everything are supposed to be recorded within three days. Doesn't happen if there are problems with the documents, so this will alleviate some of that time.
Taking bids now?
Um, I talked with Tracy about the steps in order to do that with some different vendors. I included a sheet of four different, including one that we currently have on the Kettos who we moved from the last time when Mary switched, um, of what they provide. The one that I really want to go with is Fiddler and offers the most. Um, I've talked to different registers that have had them for over ten years. And customer service wise, it's all handled, not locally, but in the state of Iowa, that's where they're located. Not sourced out anywhere either. So I'm hoping to go with them.
Okay. So what are you thinking changing next year?
Um, the contract is up in October of next year. Um, there have been some instances where some, I've, it's been determined that people have had access to our images without obtaining them from us. Um, which frightens me that they have access to our, to the documents I'm responsible for. If they have access to them, what's to stop them from changing them? And inserting something else. So I'm hoping possibly before the end of October, we'll be out of, let out of that contract for some reasons like that, yeah, so, uh, twenty-three.
Your present vendor, you're afraid that is the lead? That's not good.
How, I mean, I guess I shouldn't ask you this, but how would they do that, by computer, just?
I hack in.
That's where.
It's not hard.
We're thinking it's happening.
You're doing, so you think you could get out of that contract early for breach of contract?
Yeah.
Good, good.
I'm sorry.
Is that contract already paid?
Um, we do pay a licensing fee every month. I haven't gotten an answer from them yet if they would charge something to leave early. I do have funds in the technology fund if that needed to be covered.
Do you have the contract? You have the contract?
Yes, yes, not with you, but, yes.
How quick did you get up and run it? I mean, they said to you, tomorrow, we'll let you out in two months, could you be up and running with these other people?
Um, January would be the earliest, probably looking more at March. We would actually be active. That I could verify with. That I could verify with the new company. January first might be a possibility. It just depends on where we would fall in there.
I would think if you think that there. Let some of this stuff leak, I would think that'd be grounds to back out of the contract.
And there has been another county that has done that. I'm waiting for a call. She was at a conference. Last week and I'm waiting to talk to her. It was a recent change for them and that was one of the reasons why. To find out what the timeframe was or how what her contract length was when she was able to to get out of that contract.
So today you want us to approve for you to go forward on this? Make a motion?
You want a motion?
I think.
I'll make a motion that we um. What does that say? That we allow her to get out of this contract? And look to go into a new contract with a new company. As soon as possible.
Probably.
Yes.
That would be better.
Yes.
With the Siddler company, yes, that's.
Yes, I would like an update too. If you would keep us an update on checkups going, I'd be curious.
Right. Do you have that in a motion?
Yep, I do.
Okay, we're gonna have a second. Sam? Any further discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Osnay? Motion passed.
Did that motion include the rescinding the first contract, but also approving the second?
Right.
To take that, thank you.
Right.
Hey, Steph Sheila, you have elected officials.
Sir. Good evening, everybody. Um a quick update before I get into the electives. I just wanted to let you guys know as an update from last meeting. Um as far as the class compensation study goes, I did have a call with them on Friday. Um to get those first steps set in motion, and I will be doing regular updates on on how things stand with that. Okay?
I got a request. Is there a way you can turn this thing sideways so you can read it? You might.
Look at the screen.
If you look at the screen, Matt's got it right.
Oh, okay.
I did this, Sam.
Okay, so before we get to what's on the screen, I just want to give you everybody a reminder of why we are here talking about this. In two thousand and twenty-one. You did give um the administrative team permission to move forward with a work group to look at raises for the elected officials. Uh prior to the work group, people just came before you and asked and and changes were made as people made requests. So last year we got together. Um there was union, non-union, elected officials, um a commissioner, not um as well as department heads, and then the administration. We just facilitated the meetings and and gathered the data that was was requested. So. The two items that I'm gonna speak about first are gonna be the sheriff and the prosecutor. The reason that I'm talking about those first is because we did not make any adjustments on those last year. So the system that we came up with last year was we looked at all of the counties, the comparable counties. We took away the highest and we took away the lowest and we came up with an average. So when the group got together this year, we looked at the same data, the same counties. It was a little bit different because one didn't submit information. But we looked at those two positions that we didn't adjust last year and did the same math for those. So we took away the highest, we took away the lowest, and that gave us the average. And you can see that's the gray line that's right in the middle. So for the sheriff, that that wage would be eighty-six thousand eight hundred and fifteen dollars and sixty-seven cents. For the prosecutor, that would be a hundred and ten thousand seven hundred and seven dollars and thirty cents. So for the prosecutor, that position, that would be about an eight percent increase. For the sheriff, that would an eleven percent increase. Now, Matt, if you could scroll down to the bottom and just look at the recommendations of the group. This where it says increased calculations, that was just the group taking a look at what would it look like if we gave everybody one percent? What would it look like if we gave everybody two percent? So the committee did decide that they wanted to offer a two percent increase to all of the other positions. And then go with that same calculation that we used last year for the sheriff and the prosecutor. Recommendation, yes, yes. So that was the that was the recommendation from the committee. Now ask me questions.
So go ahead. So next year. Would it be that the treasurer clerk, green commissioner and register of deeds would be the average of the. The median average and then the sheriff and the prosecutor would get? Two percent is.
Well, well, we only made the recommend. They only made the recommendation for starting October first. So it would be those that are in the yellow, starting October first. And then the the board really needs to decide if you want us to continue meeting like this every year and and decide what the wage would be. Or if there's some other mechanism that you want to put into place. What this does is gets everybody into line. With what the work group thought would be appropriate.
John, now they're all synced up. Last year, the sheriff and prosecutor were not looked at because they had had relatively recent increases. And that's why they weren't. Your goals were. Next year, everybody will have added an increase this year. And depending on the work group decides and recommends to this board, I would guess that we go right through the same methodology again. Through the comps from the other counties, drop high, drop low, average, and there's the recommendation. So. This gets everybody synced up on all the positions. But was I clear about that?
I had one question. Uh actually, it's for Sheriff Morris. Does this keep you ahead of your undersheriff?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I have a comment. So. With a two percent raise, then it drops us all down to the bottom. Of the comparables. So it would seem like you would want to be consistent across the board. If you're using the median, why aren't you doing that with the other elected officials?
We used the median for everybody last year with the exception of the sheriff and the prosecutor.
But then how did we fall down to the second from the bottom?
That is what the work group decided is to do the two percent for those other positions.
I think that um uh no. That may reflect, let me know for a theory. It may reflect that um folks in other places might have gotten higher percentage increases. The two percent is kind of in keeping, I think, with um. Where we come up with two percent was.
Um it's this kind of standard.
Yeah.
Cost of living.
Yeah, that's a, yeah.
Now, would elected officials be still considered getting the annual increase? That we give all non-union?
They do not.
They do not.
This is this is a substitute for.
Unless we would choose to do so.
Correct.
Okay, to me, two percent is pretty low increase, especially in today's times. For elected officials. I would think we should give them more. That's my opinion.
Um if I could speak on behalf of the other elected officials, I'm not gonna speak on mine because mine's substantial and I appreciate that, but. If you want to get all these synced up at one time, do us all median this year and then readdress it again next year, then you're not going to two percent median, two percent median. That's what I'm shooting. I have it kind of computed out um. It comes out, it depends on which one you do. I mean. Actually, the green commissioners like six hundred dollars more a year compared to where Chotee's at. Like uh Angie and Terry and Kim, they're a little bit more, but. That gives the median of the Santa La Costa branch, Wago and Monacom, straight down the line. Um what I found with the sheriff's office is. Provisionary social thing just down the way you study last meeting. And what you find is when we submit our schedule, which would have been what is on the board there. Um that's what everybody else compared and they're giving their raises on October one also. So it's like we're almost a year behind. It's what it kind of computes out. Because they're going by my previous wage of last year and not my new wage when you do an error, so. Um it's kind of almost like a year behind in a way.
Okay, the counts as well.
Well, they they, I think, are getting ahead of the game now, what I've got. And not waiting for everybody else to submit their stuff. And going right on point. And I think you did do that this year for cost correct?
I did.
Yeah.
And what I did find, because I did check with each county, was how what their mechanism was. Um and consistently through them all, it what is given to them is the same amount that is given to non-union staff. And you can see that there's an asterisk that the um COLA is generally one to two percent for that one that's got the two asterisks. They actually did seven point one this year, um which is pretty significant. But as a general rule, the electeds move up with the same as the non-union. So that way they are not coming every year. It's just you would make the decision, whatever the non-union's getting, then that's what the electeds get as well. But that would be a decision that you guys make as as far as how to how to change those regularly.
Terry's got a question back.
Yeah.
Church was also doing wage study this year and what is they're they're looking at an average between three and four percent, not two percent. But I think that we should all be on the same schedule, like what sheriff said. That some of us two percent, some of us go by the average, which should all be, I think, on the same schedule.
So to get on that same schedule, what are you recommending? Are we looking at three or four percent to even everybody up or?
I'm looking at, I'm sorry, I thought you were asking me. Can that averaging come out just like they did sheriff and press?
So do you know what that would come to?
I can go do those calculations and bring it back because Tracy has something to speak of on this.
I think Sheriff has. Yes, I do.
Sheriff Morris, you have a.
Yes, yes. Let's do it with Excel and get them printed and.
And I want to get the cart before the horse, Sheriff, because we've got something at the end of the meeting here we have to talk about with the unions and how much. If we're gonna to ratify or not ratify that that what their request is, and I think. Those requests can be figured into what we're talking about here.
And you could bring back those figures at that time when we have to go back into regular session.
You need to. We actually will have to go back into regular session anyway, so. So I can have that stuff for the rest. Yes, I can have that stuff ready for that.
Yeah, you can do that or we can pick this up next meeting, but whatever.
I think we can.
If you can just adjust it, I think you could bring it back to us, wouldn't you say?
What that represents in terms of our percentage.
Well, I think we want to be. I think everybody's trying to be fair here.
Right.
Uh so we've got some other discussions to make, which we haven't decided yet. And once we make those discussions and decide that situation, we come back and and.
Yeah, I agree with you.
I'll speak as slowly as I need to then. Uh but this is um uh commissioners. Tracy says, I wrote you a memo about this. And and then I'm offering you information, not a recommendation per se. But um I've given you the uh the law on this. Commissioners are a little bit different than others in that salaries can only be adjusted and implemented. For commissioners at particular times. You are right now within that time. So it's fine for you uh to deal with this now. I've also given you some history of uh your increases. And you haven't had an actual increase since um two thousand seventeen or two thousand sixteen seventeen. And you may recall, some of you were here, that there was actually a combining of the various expenditures, your per diem, your flat rate, your mileage. Uh it was deemed administratively a little uh smoother, easier. It was just one number that folks were were dealing with, and that's the decision you made at that time. So when you made the jump from one figure to the next in two thousand sixteen seventeen, it was not an actual increase. It was simply an administrative change in the way your costs were processed. So that was, again, not a big actual jump for that year. You've been at uh, I'm gonna talk just commissioners. Chair is five hundred dollars more. Um just talking commissioners, you've been at twelve thousand dollars since two thousand seventeen. Yeah. Um so, gosh, six years later, maybe it's time to take a look at that. You can uh make that decision. Uh what we did provide for you at the bottom of page two of the memo is what percentage. A particular dollar amount might represent. So ten percent would be an increase of twelve hundred dollars, which placed on top of the twelve thousand would be thirteen thousand. And so the numbers go. I'll offer you an additional calculation, though. If you were to take the twelve thousand in two thousand seventeen. And increase it by two percent, a low number, well, not so low a number then. Increase it by two percent over each of the six years. Um this, you would be at thirteen thousand two hundred and fifty, thirteen thousand two hundred and fifty. And then whatever you might want to do this year. Yeah. So that's at two percent. Maybe you'd want to go four percent now, but. Uh so there are a variety of ways you could go. I did provide you some uh sort of uh. Uh comparable information from other counties. The problem is, as I said in the memo, this is not comparing apples to apples. Because when you look at the base salary, you have to consider what's included in that. And uh all all or almost all on top of this base, they add mileage and per diem. So I wanted you to have the numbers. But we can't really do the across-the-board comparison without knowing how many miles each of these commissioners drive and how many meetings they attend in a particular day. But here you are. Um I could certainly make a case that you are receiving less than. Moncom, Santa Lac and McCosta, just because they get mileage and one of them gets per diem and mileage and, you know, you're at your base level. So. Um what questions can I answer for you? Additional information I could go get or just. The thing I would like to say is, in the past, since I've been on the board, commissioners never raised the. Pages. It was always different supervisors such as. I mean, City of San Luis, City of Valona, Frederick Bridge, the supervisors would do a study or whatever, and they made a choice for the move in a freezer. So I will check with Richard Gay, who used to be on the board and asked a lot, but it's my understanding that we couldn't raise our own thousand pages. By statute, you are the only entity that could uh raise your own. So.
The body, but still have to approve it.
Uh huh.
I look at this and we're on top of the scale, and I would think citizens would look at this and say we're on top of the scale.
We're not.
Yeah, but.
But you're not.
But you're sitting apples to apples, we're not. We're way down.
Wouldn't count. You get health insurance benefits in retirement.
That's right. And some of those other people probably get health insurance and retirement on top of it. Uh we're getting a wage.
Is this something we can think about? You can. You have until the uh end of December to do this. You can think about it, but just please let me know what else that you're going to want. I mean. I've given you all the information. Generally, folks want comparables. Uh. You also, you know, I gave you, um I referenced in the memo the MAC survey, but it's three years old now, and. So it's just there for kicks and giggles, but um sure, you can think about it. You can do nothing. I'm I'm here to serve. There anything you would.
First of all, I guess I want to clarify, I probably not for the money. I, Sam Smith, I'm not doing this for the money.
I'm not either.
But I want to tell you that. There's other people gonna do this someday, and you and you need quality people and you need to be able to pay them from some time or whenever. Um I think we're trying to get. These elected officials, which we also are too, on the same board. I think you probably have to come along a little bit every year. And so whether it's that number that. I mean, she's looking at the number. We all know what the number is gonna be for next year because we're part of that closed session stuff. But if you look at the two percent or whatever it's been that they've handed out to. Elected officials, probably you ought to get this body on that same type of program. I mean, if you're gonna try to get everybody even. And I really want to clarify this. It's not about the money, but it's, I I flew home with my money last year. But I just think that. You probably ought to get that instead of all of a sudden taking a big shot six years later or seven years later. I think you take the hit for it's two percent that we've given uh uh since two thousand sixteen or whatever you said it is. Um I think you probably ought to do that. And then whatever the other number is, when we start to elect officials on another new number, it ought to stay that way. And I think then next year. When we when we come to that again, if it's two percent, if it's five percent versus one percent. When we when we come to that again, if it's two percent, if it's five percent versus one percent. Then then elected officials, which we all are, we get that. Keeps you kind of in some type of form, you know? And then if you really get out of whack, then you could look at it. You'd have this committee look at it again when it's five years down the road or whatever.
Problem with that though, it doesn't always coincide legally what we do.
Well, you can.
Is it every year? Can you do it every year?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You just uh you just can't do it. Um so you do it every year. What does the law say? It it it's before the beginning of a term of office, so it would be every other, every two years or soon, every four years.
Oh, we go, oh, I see, I see.
Um as your timing issues though, a-again, the legal mechanisms is just different for you folks. Um but reviewing your compensation this year does get you on that every year track and becomes a part of this process. Now we'll have to make notes and it will be in two years or four years for you. Um the the other difficult part, and this is not a rebuttal, but just, you know, there's a little bit to it. You know, this is what we have to work with in terms of our comparables. And so it'll be difficult to do that. Let's get the counties drop the high, drop the low, but you know, something can be figured out. But that is something for you to consider that it was six years now, just you went three terms without doing anything. You know, doing something now, you you wouldn't be able to review it for as of four years now, next time.
Mm-hmm. If uh. If the uh mileage and per diem were added back. Then each year as IRS changes those rates probably up. Would that be something that could somewhat act as an automatic raise mechanism on a yearly basis?
Well, I I don't think so because the IRS increases its mileage rate as a reflection of costs and fuel costs. So I think that's just helping you to to stay even. Um.
It might be something that goes up faster than two percent per year though.
But most certainly, most certainly it would. But again, um. If by that, you'd be suggesting that you're actually falling behind. And to reinstate all that administrative work is to keep you even. I can't argue that that's untrue.
How would you do it if you did, if you got it back to even at two percent, say, a year? And so whatever the rate is going to be this year, so then you're even for the year when you started it next year. So you couldn't do this for two years or four years?
Or.
So then in four years, when you're looking at it again, how would you get this body back up to the other elected officials? Just by saying if if it was two percent for the next four years, then this body would get six percent back then?
Well, six percent, but cumulative. And the way I I ran uh the numbers and came up with thirteen. Thirteen to fifty is I took your number for two thousand seventeen, increased it by two percent. And then uh two thousand eighteen was on, you know, so it was it was cumulative. Yeah.
Same thing again. And if somebody else wanted to do it then.
We you we can do it any way you like, but yes, that's one way of doing it.
See, I think it should be good enough that sometime fifteen years from now, when Mike retires as sheriff, that he would consider running as a commissioner.
We should be about eighty grand.
Well, with inflation, then we might get there.
I just I just think if you had if you had the bone of whatever that percentage comes to the the elected officials at that time. Why, even though we can't hit it every car. We have to wait for four years again. I I just think it's probably a fair way to do this. First of all, now okay, this year we get ten points. I mean, you look at the you look at the optics of that. We got a ten percent raise, you know, it's.
Yeah, yeah.
Optics are not good.
Exactly right. If we went back, we didn't do anything in two thousand seventeen, but everybody since two thousand seventeen, see, they've got a one and a half, two and a half percent rate depending on the year. So we took six years and added all that in there, which is ten percent.
Yeah.
What makes it weird to me is we haven't done anything since then, but we're still at the top scale.
No, we're not because other guys get per diem and they're up there money-wise, but they get per diem in meetings.
Yeah, better regret.
As far as salary, as far as salary.
Base, but that's not it. But that's they're going to get more for per diem, for example. Um so and mileage, you know, they're going to get more for per diem. And you know, as I was saying, uh Montcom, Sandalack and McCosta, it would take them nothing, a couple of meetings to catch up to you at twelve.
Okay.
So I I'm going to take this. I'm going to fold it up. And I'm going to put it back. I just, sure you'd ask for it.
I just think some way they could have it where you could every year, even though it would be every four years now. I mean, you get a shot this year and then four years now, if if they were giving two percent raises for the next four years. Then this body would get eight percent or whatever. Yeah, go up with the two percent raises that the other officials got. We just have to give it a different time.
Well, really, we're starting now. If that logic is in place, we're at ten percent.
Well, then you're going to be stuck where you are for another four years. So kind of building forward.
I mean, you're going to get one seventeen. Probably the average of the last few years have been two percent that the elected officials got.
Uh.
Hasn't it been one percent some years?
Oh, right.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, no, I I don't know. Last year was the first year that we did this process. And so we were trying to get everybody kind of on on.
But then you give them kind of what the unions got. I mean.
We used.
Yeah, they they averaged them out last year.
Last year was the first year, yeah.
But I think a year before, we didn't get anything.
Because that's why why we set up this system, because you had elected officials that hadn't had an increase since. But they, you know, wasn't totally really mad and came in here and said, doggone it, folks, you know, we're following everybody.
So they never had a raise every year either.
They they did not get regular raises, as I recall. I don't think that they were getting what the unions got.
There is he took one period. It's why he was chair in sixteen.
I think you got to give a little bit every year. I just think you got to give some of that if you're giving it.
That's what we're doing now.
Right.
But because of law, we can't do that with you.
I know, but I I just.
Throw a number out there and you can blame it because you're elected officials. You've not had an increase since whatever year I said. You're not going to get another one for four years. Consider going with a twenty-four hundred dollar increase that puts you at fourteen four. Which is, I think, a pretty reasonable number now, again, including all of your per diem and expenses. Um and I don't think anybody's. I think everybody's going to catch right up with you because of the inflationary environment we're in now. Yeah, again, a few years ago, two percent sounded fine. You kind of kept pace, but. You know, we but inflation isn't forever. So anyway, talked all around it. I I'm going to see if it makes it easier for you. I'm going to suggest that you give yourself an additional twenty-four hundred dollars a year increase, bringing you to fourteen four per year.
I think we're going to have that basically for the next six years.
Yeah.
So.
Five years.
That um in reaching out to the comparable counties, other people are interesting as well. So I was asking the question and they were saying, please get us some, just they were. So I do, it is a fact that these are going to increase the few of them for the other.
And so, yeah, given given that number and given the years that if we don't do it this year, it'll be basically six years till you do it.
Five.
About five years.
Wouldn't it be again in the twenty twenty-four election year, you could do it for twenty twenty-five?
Okay, why it asks that it's so it's.
It would cover four years at that.
Okay, so it's, when can they do it again?
Three.
Twenty-two.
Next year? Because. Yes, because then it'll be the forty. Okay, okay. You can do it again in here. It's a quickie change of when does the two-year become the four-year terms? Okay.
And in twenty-three, then you are talking about four years in the future.
And twenty-three is coming January.
No.
Yeah.
You could do it anytime next year, anytime next year, but it couldn't take effect until January of twenty-four.
So if you did it now, it'd take effect January twenty twenty-three?
Yeah. January first coming up.
For the new.
That why you wouldn't have to even fill.
Well, unless unless you unless there was a two percent raise to like. Say, you get one or two percent raise or whatever.
And if you're not on the right here for for commissioners and only get on on hot years.
Right, but they're going to they're going to get it this year. You can do it this year. She just said you can do it next year because we're going to go to a four-year term. So next year, say it was a two percent raise to non-union folks and elected officials, if you put them on that schedule, we would be an elected official. You could do it next year. That we wouldn't get a shot at it for four more years.
Right.
But so. So that twenty-four hundred dollars, and if you don't do anything for six, basically five years, you'd be ready for another one.
Or you could go less this year and then review it again next year for that four-year period.
Think that would make sense.
I think you mean they're running again. The commissioners would run again two thousand twenty-four.
For four-year terms.
Yeah, for yeah. So wouldn't it be two thousand twenty-four?
I don't know.
In the twenty-three year, you could do it for the four-year.
Next year, we next year, we would get this raise.
On January first and then anytime during the calendar and anytime during the calendar year next year, you can bump yourselves up again. Just prior to, just has to be before January one of twenty-four. I need the calendars in front of me to be.
Run in two thousand twenty-four.
I think it's twenty-five because that's what my new term started by around the.
It would be January of twenty-five, yes.
Yeah.
And we're going to be elected during four, but take your term to twenty-five.
Right.
But I think you'd have to do it.
Whatever the year is, you can give yourself an increase this year and next year, but then not for four years.
It'd be in the twenty-four year.
Yeah, two thousand.
During the year because the term would start January first, twenty-five.
Yeah.
Five years.
Yeah.
That's when that's when my new term would start by around now. Two years from January first.
Yep. A little bit, whatever.
And that's when the new board would start too.
Yeah.
After this two-year cycle, because the new board is going to start January twenty-three, then you before your term starts January first twenty-five.
Well, I'll make a motion that we set the commissioner's salary at fourteen four. On for the calendar year twenty twenty-three.
I'll support that.
Okay, we have a motion and support. Now that would.
Effective January one.
January twenty-three.
Not.
Twenty percent increase. At two percent a year is going back ten years and increasing it. When did we? When did we increase it to twelve thousand?
Eight, sixteen. Sixteen, seventeen, probably ten, right?
I do so six years. It 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 which would be twelve percent.
No, no.
It's a twenty percent increase over where where it's at.
Last increase was in two thousand sixteen.
Yeah, this is a starting point. This is where that from there we can go. And starting, you'd have to add up the years that we couldn't participate in that and then put it into the.
Either the same thing we're doing now. You just catch up in four years.
Yeah, just catching back.
And you'd have a track record of what you were giving other elected officials since we.
Yeah, we do have a motion on the floor. I I'm just thinking. That I can I could justify up to sixteen percent, but I think twenty is a little extra, but any further discussion?
Roll call.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey.
Yes.
Commissioner Bunting.
Hold up, Stan.
Commissioner Lumberman.
Yes. Does that mean you don't take the money?
Well, I just feel like.
I feel like you don't want to just have somebody say, oh, you took the raise.
Yeah, I just feel like I'd like to think all about that.
I'm voting no. So what's the tally?
Three to one.
Three to one. So motion passed.
Okay.
Okay, motion passed at fourteen four. Also gave themselves. Make sure Chris is hearing the. Effective January one. All involved. It's not a big issue. Man, is that in the past.
Okay, so next, I believe we need a.
I really don't carry the right.
Something to add to.
It does.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. Yeah.
Mr. I'd ask for both of those sessions that Matthew would be able to remain. Because otherwise he goes away and he doesn't know when we're done and it just keeps recording. He also in the session for the uh discussion of the airport real property, he will have a couple of screen uh shares to say. Uh help us with. So I ask that he be permitted to stay.
Okay, without objection.
He's got he's got to swear on the life of his first child.
Okay. Which is, you gotta swear uh swear on the first board.
Well, dude.
So uh there's a motion to go into closed session. Okay, we do have a budget. Yep. So, Chris.
See, the sheriff is practicing being the commissioner.
I know. If we have a meeting discrepancy, he can find. He'll be the meeting guy. Have to stay there forever.
All right, I am uh happy to announce that. I have a budget where everybody's name on the front page is spelled right. All the numbers in the budget have been changed during this meeting, so I will have to update that. But um I put a hard copy in front of each of you. You will see uh. On the bottom left-hand page of the page, there are page numbers, so I will be referencing to those. I'm going to start uh going over the budget transmittal message on page one. Uh should be up on the screen in the boardroom. Also, uh the transmittal message is essentially just a a verbalization of. What the budget is, what has changed, what we're expecting in the upcoming year. Uh under the budget and brief, the first thing that you'll see, the last paragraph on page one. The general fund budget, which we went over uh three weeks ago at our last meeting. Is estimated at fourteen point seven million. That is up thirteen from thirteen point two in the in the prior year. Um what we discussed a couple of weeks ago was the increases were related to healthcare. Retirement, inflation, particularly with cap capital projects. We also have several capital projects that did not get completed this fiscal year due to the delay in supply chain. Which are carried over to uh our next fiscal year, so they had to be budgeted again. Um the total for the county budget for all funds is sixty-six point seven million dollars. Now that is. Up from forty million dollars. And the primary reason that it is up approximately twenty-six million dollars is that. Uh there has been a change in accounting. Uh a new governmental accounting standard was released and we implemented it. Uh during this fiscal year, which requires us to account for custodial funds. Um and I'm just going to explain what those custodial funds are right now. Um I'm going to flip to. Page thirty. Which gives us our county budget by fund. Our custodial funds are. Well, that's twenty-eight. Located in the seven hundreds. So we're looking at seven oh two through seven fifteen. Um and these were added. You so the these budgets were not. Approved last year. So it'll be the first time we're approving budgets for these. Uh the largest one is seven oh three current tax collections where the expenditures.
January one.
Thirty.
With current expenditures of twenty point five million dollars. Um and what we collect in that fund is um. The state education tax, real estate transfer tax, mobile homes tax, uh drains. And under uh RESD and pill, um payment in lieu of taxes. Uh historically, we did not record revenues and expenditures when we collected these taxes. We put them, we just held them in a fund before we sent them to the appro. We just held them in a fund before we sent them to the appropriate, uh, recipient. Uh, state education tax obviously goes to the state. The, the R E S D taxes goes to the R E S D. Um, and that's the reason that they are called custodial funds is because. The money is not ours. We're just the custodian. The treasurer collects it and then sends it to the appropriate place. Uh, so now we are. Recording revenues and expenditures when we bring those in, even though technically they are not the county's revenue and expenditure. But it is a way for. Us to be held accountable, better accountable for this money. So we were looking at, of the forty million dollar increase, twenty-one million is related to those custodial accounts. And I flipped back to, uh, page one, just to explain. Uh, three million of it is related to authorizing the expenditures of A R P funds. There is a three million dollar increase there. I expect that a lot of the projects that we have approved in the community, uh, work will be done on them next year. Uh, so we budgeted five million in expenditures for that. Uh, there is an additional one point five million increase in the general fund. And just those, uh, three categories alone, we're, we're talking about, uh, twenty-five point. Five million increase of the twenty-six million increase. And move along to page two. Uh, challenges in creating this budget. One of the bigger ones was healthcare costs. We, we went over this in detail when, when we looked at the general fund. The majority of our salaries in healthcare come through our general fund, but it, it's one of the leading drivers of our cost increases in this. Uh, budget. Inflation also negatively affected our budget. Uh, the turbine tax litigation again shows up as we are almost halfway through, um. Dealing with, with the turbine farm owners. Um, we still have some, uh, vastly unknown, uh, future expenses or refunds related to that. Um, in addition, our first, uh, settlement has not yet been completed, so. Um, that tells me that we are still racking up lawyer bills, uh, for, for the, for the first one. Uh, retirement expenses continue to increase for us. I do believe we are at the very top of how much retirement is going to cost us. But it is still over ten percent of what our general fund revenues are, and that's a, a significant. Percentage of our money that goes to, uh, retirement expenses. Uh, just a reminder, twenty twenty-six will be the last payment that we have for our bond that went to the pension. Uh, to the pension fund, so we'll see significant relief after that is paid off. Um. Uh, again, the, the timing of our county union negotiations and, and budget present, presentation did not, uh. Allow for the ratified agreements, um, so. To be included in this presentation, so there, there, there will still be some adjustments to the salaries going forward. Um, and there have been significant delays for most of our capital projects. Uh, causing them to be carried over from our previous fiscal year to the next one. Taking a look at our general fund revenues, we are projected to have approximately fourteen point eight million dollars. Um, and surprising, well, this shows you where the majority or where, where the revenues come from, where. At sixty-four percent come from taxes. Sixteen percent are grants from the feds and the state department generates at eighteen percent and transfers from other funds are two percent. And the, uh, percentage-wise, it was the exact same as it was in, in the previous year. Uh, revenues are up, projected to be up about two hundred thousand dollars from last year. Um, we saw a fairly significant jump in our real estate tax generation. But we did see for the first time a dip in our personal property, which is, uh, turbine, uh, driven. So those two offset. We will break down our expenditures. We're looking at, uh, without. Adding in items that have been approved today. Or adding in anything that might be ratified for the union negotiations, we're at a forty-two thousand dollar surplus. Now, that surplus is going to turn into a deficit if negotiations are ratified. Um, and when we discussed the general fund in the previous meeting. Uh, we discussed a few things that we could do in order to balance that budget. To make room for, um. The, the union negotiations and, and other. Salary-related raises that have, have been discussed. Um, and I would like to ask the board, again, at the end of this, if they would consider. Um, using A R P funds to fund some of our capital projects in order to balance the budget. Uh, but I'll, I will do that once we get to the capital project list, which is in this presentation. Uh, salaries.
Chris, when we get to that, uh, you would just be looking, uh, we have not formally as a board. Uh, made a motion that the remaining A R P funds be only used for the county. Uh, for county capital projects. That's, is that what you're looking for there?
Correct, yes, I would be looking for a motion, um, in similar fashion that you've. Um, officially approved all other projects.
Okay.
Um, salaries, wages and benefits, they represent approximately sixty percent of the general fund revenues. Um, there, there's a possibility it could creep up to sixty-one percent. Um, but I, I, I think it's sixty percent is a good, healthy figure. Um, operating supplies, for the first time since I have been doing budgets for Grashit County. Uh, I raised operating supplies budget for, um. For departments, and that is because of the infla, inflationary reasons. Um, general fund debt services, um. Our pension liability bond, the payment for that is eight hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars. Uh, for the upcoming fiscal year. We have approximately seven more years of. Payments for the emergency operating center building, which is shared with, uh, central dispatch. And then we have three outstanding, uh, bonds through, uh, through the drain department. And general fund appropriations this year, which include childcare fund, capital improvement and debt retirement. Are at just under two point two million dollars. That's up about two hundred thousand. That's part of the general fund.
Chris, can I stop you right there? I just have a question. When you're looking at the bond payment for the pension fund, I mean, you said we had this for a couple more years. Say this eight sixty-one or whatever, however it fluctuates.
Correct.
So the Mears contribution this year will be three seventy-six?
Correct.
So really, you're right, we clean that up, we'll be ahead of the game.
Absolutely.
It just really reiterates, it's a good thing to do.
Yep, and I think that's one of the reasons that's always, we've always targeted that time period for, uh, the potential for exploring.
Yeah.
Uh, a, a new jail. Moving on to page four, items requiring continued monitoring. The first one is the A R P funds, um. Just because I know that. We need to keep our contracts in order, um. We just had a, a, a request for a payment today from Perrington where. I asked them to forward on some additional information on the payments. So I have, uh, a colleague who works out in California and he says he just got through audit. Um, and was expecting his A R P funds to have no issues at all. And he had several projects that were flagged and deemed ineligible, so. Um, I'm doing the best that I can to make sure that we have as much information as possible to, uh. To give to our audit firm. Uh, the childcare fund, uh. Jennifer discussed this a little bit earlier, uh, we always seem to come in under budget. Fairly significantly with a childcare fund, we'll, we'll usually put around a hundred to a hundred and fifty thousand back into our, our fund balance and our general fund. But this is one where, um, you know, just talking about the, the cost of, of housing a juvenile can, can run. Upwards of four, five, six thousand dollars a month. Um, it's something that we need to keep an eye on and make sure it doesn't get out of hand. Uh, and the county landfill made the list again, exploring safe uses.
Oh, quick, is there any reimbursement for that program, Mike? This housing the juvenile?
Yeah.
Not that I'm worried.
Just, we're just out there in state.
The, uh.
Overflow goes at Mike's house.
The state pays for two-thirds.
In the garage.
Yeah. Like this room, we just rent it every day. I mean, they'll pay it two-thirds of that?
Yes.
Yes, yeah.
Okay. Your time's gone. This is more difficult.
The next item, page five, the resolution. Um, I will obtain a resolution number from the clerk. Um, one of the interesting things, I, I, I didn't change much, I just updated this. Um, we'll update them, the authorized mills, uh, the amount. Um. One of the items in here is that. The board for the road commission will receive the same compensation. As the county's board, so that's something to keep in mind, uh, when you up your pay, ups their pay also.
Thank God.
Rolling into page ten, uh, goals and objectives. I updated the goals and objectives appropriately, and this is something that I, I would definitely welcome any feedback. Uh, goals and objectives, monitoring of the American Rescue Plan Funds. Um. Clean audit report, continued staff develop, professional development, the Grashit County Airport. Uh, classification study, sustainability and productive use of the landfill property. So a lot of the issues that we identified in the last year, uh, are, are really starting to come to fruition here. Uh, particularly with the airport and with A R P funds and I, even the classification study. So, uh, they were applicable for the, the upcoming fiscal year, so I updated the wording accordingly. Moving on to page eleven, this is the capital, uh, improvement plan. And the capital improvement plan, under information management, one of the larger projects is, um. Updating the phone system for the county, uh, estimated at a one hundred thousand dollars. Um. We're looking at the unit four chiller that we have approved. And ordered that got, that was supposed to be done this fiscal year, that had to get moved to next fiscal year. Because delivery was not going to be, I believe, until January. Um, Commission on Aging has some projects, the typical sheriff's department, um, patrol vehicles. Um.
I have a question too for the sheriff on that. Uh, two questions. One is, are you going to buy an electrical car or are you going to stay with? And the other question I had for you is that, um, it was my, my impression that. I've talked to a few people that were looking for new, a different car, upgrading their vehicles. One had a two thousand twelve, and she was going to buy, it was a Chevrolet, a little bit bigger than mine. I have a Cruze. A little bit bigger than mine, it was, and for two thousand eighteen, it was thirty-seven thousand. And she said she just.
So we'll be buying, we'll, I just do the state purchasing, we're part of the state purchasing bids, we'll get a discount on. Uh, through, like, State of Michigan, and that's who we go through. We'll have your lot on team, for dive this.
Now, would they go up because everybody else is up, or you think though?
Significant with last year and this year. Okay, so.
Okay, this was wondering. Okay, Chris.
Yep, so when we got, when we first, uh, received the A R P funds, uh, the board approved. For the life of the funds that we could, uh, replace computers with, or. Laptops that would be purchased could be used by A R P funds, so that's why you see. Uh, two columns there in twenty-two, twenty-three and twenty-three, twenty-four that are, um. Related to A R P funds. Uh, because those were previously approved by the board. Um, and one of the ways that we could balance the budget for. The general fund for next year would be to authorize administration to. Apply the remainder of the A R P funds to, uh, capital projects that we have upcoming. So, I, I would, um, I would like. To give you a moment to ask me any questions or ask our administrator any questions about any of these projects. And if you would consider formally authorizing us to use the remainder of the A R P funds for in-house projects.
I didn't catch, uh, what projects?
In-house. In-house.
Oh, yeah.
For house projects, sorry, in-house, yes.
And that would be the, um. Forty-four thousand five hundred? Or the twenty-seven?
You're talking about eight hundred and twenty-one thousand.
Eight hundred and twenty-one thousand, eight hundred dollars.
Yep, bottom number.
Okay, I make the motion.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Smith, second by Commissioner Bailey. Any discussion on that? And we do have that much, uh, available, correct?
Let me pull that up for you, I just.
It's, it's.
It'll be close, well, it depends who.
We're looking at. Seven hundred and thirty-seven thousand minus the fifty-some that was approved earlier today, so.
About six, sixteen.
So we really should be talking about six, what?
Well, just use the balance of them, because we may have ones coming back in.
Is that your motion to use the balance?
Balance the A R P funds to, to these capital projects, because we wanted, we wanted to save a million and a half for the county, that didn't work out. And so, I just think that we put the balance here, and we'll still have some change left from some other projects, I think, and. We'll see where we're at, we got.
Yeah, we were, we had someone that we've bid.
Yeah.
I will track those separately. If somebody does not use the entire amount that was allotted. I will make sure that it is tracked as a separate pot, so that you have the ability to reissue that how you feel fit, how you see fit.
Yeah, but if we could take care of this eight twenty-one, it'd be great.
Do you have that motion?
Do you want just the remaining balance, or do you want a dollar moment there?
Just the balance, the balance of the A R P funds to go to the.
Remaining balance.
Twenty projects.
Hey, any further discussion? Should probably do roll call or what?
Commissioner Bailey.
Yes.
Commissioner Bunting.
Yes.
Commissioner Lumberman.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy.
Yes, motion passed.
Does anybody have any questions about specific projects?
You said something first, we didn't get to.
Not specific projects.
Do you have any questions about any of the projects?
Not today, maybe tomorrow.
Okay, yeah, we can, we can talk about them next meeting. Um, the next meeting is the official public hearing, um, by the way, so, uh, it has been published by the clerk. Um. The, the draft budget is on the website, and there is a hard copy in the clerk's office for the public to review. If they choose to. Um, page thirteen, we're getting into, uh, fees. Um, page thirteen, we're getting into uh fees. For the individual departments. Uh, drain commission on fifteen, we've got. Construction permit fee schedule, page seventeen, uh then there isn't. S E S C, that is soil erosion. Register of deeds. County treasure. Page twenty-one. Uh, elected officials compensation. Um, this will need to be updated. Page twenty-two, department staffing, page twenty-three. Union salary schedules. Now we're getting into page twenty-eight. This is um. We're getting into the budgetary numbers. So. This is set up the same way that I have done it for the past several years, and I'll run through real quick. Uh, on how to, how to read the budget. Um, by law, we're required to have three years of funding sources. Uh, included in this. Budget, so that's why we're looking at fiscal year twenty through twenty-one on this page. Uh, the next page is twenty-one, twenty-two. And then page thirty is twenty-two, twenty-three, so this. Page thirty, the funding sources for the Grasham County budget would be what you would be passing as our budget. The first column here. The twenty-two, twenty-three budget is the expenditures for each of these funds, so the general fund is fourteen point seven million. The next three. Columns, local taxes, department-generated, federal and state. Those are. The revenues that are coming in that will pay for the expenditures. So we have. A budget of fourteen point seven million expenditures. The column five, total revenue, fourteen point four million in total revenue being generated. The remaining amount. Is being transferred in from other um. Funds to make up the deficit. So if there is a zero on the fund balance column. That means that we are not dipping into our fund balance to pay for our expenditures. And typically, that's what you like to see. Now, the very first one that you see that is dipping into their fund balance is Fund Two-O-Five Central Dispatch. And that is because their expenditures, one point four million, is larger than their revenue, one point two million. Now, the reason that they're dipping into their fund balance is because they made that very large purchase to replace their um. Uh, it's like a six hundred thousand dollar purchase to replace the equipment that they had out there. The first payment, the first loan payment of three hundred thousand dollars is due. Uh, in December. They've been saving up money. In their fund balance in order to pay for that. So. The question that this leaves. Is does Central Dispatch have enough money in their bank account to pay an additional one hundred eighty-five thousand dollars? To answer that question, we need to go to the next page, in the next um. Spreadsheet that's put back, put together, Grasham County's projection of fund balance, now fund balance is primarily cash that they have. We look at Central Dispatch. We know that they're gonna spend a hundred eighty-five thousand dollars more than what they're bringing in, so we gotta make sure that they have that. The amount of money they had on hand at the beginning of this fiscal year was six hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars. Factor in what they're gonna bring in, what they're gonna spend. We get to the budgeted year. Where they have one point two million in revenue, four million in expenditures. At the end of that. They will still have four hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars in the bank. So that tells me that they have enough money to dip into that to make that payment. A good way to look at this spreadsheet here is to look at the projected balance at nine thirty, twenty-three, at the end of the budgeted fiscal year. And see if there are any negatives. Because there should not be any negatives, we we do not allow any of our bank or any of our departments to go in the negative. So when I look at this. I see this negative number here and Fund Two-Six-Nine, the Law Library. Um, and that is a mistake by me, because it should not be negative, and I apologize, I just wrapped this up this morning. I didn't have a chance to double check it. But what we have going on, and and when I saw this negative number, I went and I checked their cash balance. Their cash balance right now is forty-three thousand dollars, so if they have forty-three thousand dollars in the bank. They're planning on spending thirty, they're not gonna go in the negative. So what happened? Is when I inputted our current year's budget expenditure of thirty thousand dollars. It. Subtracted that out, but the Law Library didn't actually spend thirty thousand dollars. So I will go back in here. And I will adjust this budget number of thirty thousand dollars down to eight thousand dollars is what they actually spent. Which I'll put our ending fund balance into um the positive. I believe there was one more. Fund Six-Six-Six, which I need to change that fund number, I just don't like it.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Marine Safety. Um. And I will have to, Marine Safety is, we we, it's a paid for, would buy a state grant. We charge all of our um. Police.
Right.
Odying expenses to that and submitted to the state to get reimbursed. Um, and what does not get reimbursed, we just have to transfer in a small amount of money. Uh, to cover it. So that is how we go about and and try and read and make sure that we have a good budget. I don't expect you to have a lot of questions now, because I didn't get this to you in time to review in detail. But that's, that is one, that that is the best way to to find questions um. To to ask me, um, you know. A lot of these drained debt funds, funds in the three hundred and fifties. Uh, they use their um fund balance to make the drain payments. And the reason that they dip into their fund balance and that reason that they have a fund balance. Is because a lot of people prepay um their drain assessments, so there's money already sitting in the account. So they don't collect the exact amount. During the year to make their drain payment. Because a lot of those people have already made prepayments. We see Fund Seven-O-Two, the Wind Farm Planning Fund, the authorization to spend ninety-nine thousand dollars more than what they brought in. And that's because they brought this money in. In our current fiscal year, they're not gonna bring anything, they prepaid that, the turbine. Uh, farm owners prepaid that, so that uh we're not gonna see any revenues, but we're gonna continue to spend it down. Is there anything that, that, does anybody have any questions on um any of the the funds or the numbers that? Are presented here?
Chris, I don't have a a question about any of of your numbers here, I've got a hypothetical question for you. These funds. That we are um. Custodians of, and now the the budget jumping up to uh sixty-six million. If hypothetically, if we were to go with uh that.
Mike Cow, I think was his name from. Bedler Investments. Better. Meter.
Would we be able to have? Uh, those funds generating interest for us, is that a new calculation over? Uh, what we were talking about before?
No, we would not, um, for two reasons, one reason, um. We s- we send this money. Every month to where it's supposed to go, so it would not be in our possession long enough to. Uh, have a third party invested for us, and two. Um, any interest that we do accrue on any of this stuff by law. Because we're not the, we're not the owner of this money, we have to send that interest generated along with the money. So um. It would go to the R E S D, or it would go to the state in most cases. And some of them, we are actually required not to hold in an interest generating account.
Another unfunded mandate. In other words, we have to do the work. You have to make sure it's all right. We pass it through and we get nothing for it. Thank you.
Captain of Michigan, practice.
Practice, Terry, you appreciate that, you know. Love that.
But it fills my time.
Hopefully we do better than Saginaw County.
Uh. Uh, rolling down to page thirty-two, this is our general fund expenditures by department, we went over this in detail, um. Three weeks ago, but if there's any questions that you have, uh, and these numbers will be adjusted. Uh, for salaries, for. Projects approved, um, et cetera, that changes that have happened or will happen tonight. Uh, after that. Page thirty-three, page thirty-four is the general fund historic trend and highlights. Again, this was covered three weeks ago, this will be updated. And starting on page thirty-five, where we get into the individual line items for each department and or fund. Uh, which gets us through the remaining. One hundred and thirty-ish odd pages, I'm not gonna scroll through each individual one. But what I'm anticipating is that over the next two weeks, you'll have a chance to. Take this home and and look at it and highlight, have a few questions. On individual funds, and then we will dive into the detail to answer those questions. Um. And at that point, that is the information that I would like to share with you. About the budget in order to get us prepared to uh uh adopt it at our next meeting. So if anybody has any questions, so give you a moment.
Um. I have, I have a question for you.
Yeah.
Um. On the Board of Commissioners. And it's one oh one, one oh one, six oh seven, are we no longer charging the fairgrounds money for the fair?
We do not, no, we don't charge them money, um. It's funny you ask that, because. Just a couple of weeks ago, I. I started, I I talked to. The people who we have a contract with, just to see what's going on, because. I didn't have a contract in hand for that, but we have a fifty-year uh. Lease agreement with them, and they have to upkeep everything, they have to have the liability insurance. Um, and so on and so forth for that, and in return, we don't charge them anything for it.
So how come it's been showing three thousand dollars every year?
Is the budget showing three thousand, or?
Oh, every, every year in our book. And I checked all the way back, it's been for years now, um. It says um in the books, it says MSU Extension Fairground, three thousand dollars.
Yeah, I don't have. I I have all zeros here.
If you look at last year's. The year before that, it will see that it's um three thousand in those books.
See your book now?
This does show last.
But it was last year and the year before. And the year before that.
That's a year right there.
Yeah. Yeah, it looks like two thousand nineteen, uh, there was, it was budgeted for three thousand dollars, but nothing was ever collected. And I think that was just because um. I probably had budgeted what was budgeted the year before. Um, not knowing enough about the contract, but having. Actually reached out to the Fair for Youth and talking to them, I. Now, I. We never collected anything. And uh my guess is prior to the. Fifty-year agreement that was signed in like two thousand twelve, maybe they did pay three thousand dollars.
Another question I have is the indirect cost. That you charge all of the departments or different departments, indirect cost. And that money comes into the line item of the County Board of Commissioners, I asked one time, you said that's to pay our, what we need. But where does the extra go?
The extra, it stays in the general fund. The um, and I think I've I've explained this. Uh, every year, I think you've come up with this question. Um, the Board of Commissioners indirect cost reimbursement is just a. It's a placeholder, it's a gateway to get the money into the general fund. So it it could be charged, it could be. Deposited under an administration. Um, and still get into the same general fund. Bank account, it could be. A revenue under the Treasurer's Department. And that would still be the, a gateway to get it into the general fund account, and that's the whole purpose, is to charge uh. Funds that have. Ah, non-general fund funding. For services that the general fund pays for, to get, transfer the money from. Example, Parks and Rec to, who has a millage, to the general fund.
So in other words, it just comes through us, and then. From there, it goes on over to the general fund, wouldn't, do you show that in general fund that we put that money in there, what we didn't use?
Um, any, any, any department or any fund that starts with one oh one is the general fund, so yes, this is showing that it's going in the general fund.
If the. Chris, on page fourteen. We have one fee in the clerk's office that probably nobody else would know this, except me and Angie, is that the medical examiner permit fee. Fifty dollars, I don't know, something we've got to adapt, that does come back to our county now.
Yes.
It's not in the schedule of uh. Uh, fees for the clerks.
Is that in the contract?
Well, that's, that's a fee back to the county, we pay back to the county. I'm just looking at the fees for clerk's office and fees for.
I guess I've never had it on there.
We never had it on, we just did it two, a year and a half ago, so yeah, it's probably never been on there, because they used to keep. Anderson kept it.
Vice copy before next meeting.
Yeah.
That on that.
I guess if somebody questioned, they said, well, geez, not on your clerk's fees, why you gotta pay it?
We get that updated, we can get that on there before the next meeting, no problem. That'd be licensed then, right, probably?
That'd probably be a miscellaneous fee or something.
Yeah.
Okay.
Fifteen.
Signature fee or something. Yeah.
Yep.
I think it looks good, Chris.
Yeah, I'll get it, I'll get it all updated and um we'll we'll get it back in front of you again in two weeks. I appreciate you taking the time to uh. Listen to me talk about numbers.
Hey, I think we're back on the agenda.
Yeah.
And I've just been told that we have scratched number eight, so that's back off there.
It's gonna be presented next time. Parenting.
They want, they wanna put the two together, I guess. Okay, um. Any unfinished business anybody has? And we're gonna be going into closed session here in a bit.
What's that?
Yes. In a bit, uh, any additional public comment, public like to make any comment? Hey, you see anybody online?
Nope, I don't see anybody connected in right now.
Okay. Then we're moving on to, uh, we're gonna need a motion to go into, now we're gonna go into closed session, we're gonna come back into open session. And.
And we go back.
And then we go back into closed session for the the airport. Gonna go into the budget, come back into open session. And then go back to closed session for the airport. And then go back to closed session for the airport.
Make a motion that we go into closed session for purposes, uh, discussing union contracts.
Motion by Commissioner Bailey. Do we have a second? Second by Commissioner Bunting. Any discussion? All those in favor, aye? Aye, pose nay. Motion passed, so.